I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. I'd like to welcome all of those that are here in person and also those that might be online. Welcome. I guess the first, go ahead, Mr. DeGroot.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioner. Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. I'm here requesting an action or a motion to amend the agenda, to add an item. I know this is something that we normally don't like to do, but we can amend the agenda prior to the agenda being adopted in accordance with state law. I think this is a pretty non-controversial matter, but would request a motion to cancel a tax deed sale on parcel number 100, period 50, period 76, period A017. Reason why is, Road District will be taking over that parcel for drainage purposes instead of being sold as a tax deed, and the county can transfer that property in accordance with law. I believe it's Chapter 613, we can transfer surplus property to another political subdivision without the need of a sale. So I think this would be a good course of action to keep that pond as a drainage and cancel the sale.
With that request, Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion to add that to our regular business item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Poppins and a second by Aaron's. Is there any public input on this? Is there any discussion amongst the commissioners? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Jibben.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, can I have a motion for board action to approve the agenda?
So.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Aaron's, second by Landine to approve the agenda. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Jibben.
Yes.
Yes, next item, I need board action to approve the consent agenda items. Is there any public input on this matter first? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Poppins. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Jibben.
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on to our regular business. Item number one.
So it's a public.
Our auditor, go ahead, Shuri.
Oh, sorry. Public hearing to consider an application for a temporary on-sale malt beverage license to operate outside the municipality for Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation, Inc., for an event to occur on July 7th, 2024, located at Lincoln County Fairgrounds, 27711, Highway 17, Lenox, South Dakota, 57039, legally described as 34.12 acres of the northeast quarter, including railroad property, Section 29, Township 99, North Range 51, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota. Wendy is not going to be here today. She did want me to let you know that. She sent me an email. She said the Lincoln County Fairgrounds Foundation will host their 30th annual tractor pole at the fairgrounds on July 7th, starting at 1:00 p.m. Concessions will be offered as well. In order to purchase alcohol, a person will have to present their ID to an adult worker where they will receive a wristband and then buy tickets to make a purchase.
This has been something that we've done in the past, I think the last three years, correct?
Correct.
I guess, is there any public input on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Poppins, second by Aaron's to approve this. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Jibben.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, item number two, Mr. DeGroot.
Morning again, Commissioners. Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. Bringing an action before you. This would be an amendment to the county's current special event liquor and malt beverage licenses. The last one was adopted by the County Commission in 2011. Since that time, Chapter 35-4 has had numerous amendments, namely, one of those being under 35-4, 111, full-service restaurants can receive full liquor licenses. So this would be putting that regulation into a new resolution for the county to adopt. Other than that, there aren't a whole lot of changes. And I did this in conjunction with Commissioner Aaron's. He thought it was appropriate to bring this up, and he and I worked on this, and so there hasn't been a lot of changes. It would still limit the amount of licenses in a calendar year to six licenses, but what we did add was the ability for the County Commission to rescind any license, temporary license that's given if somebody would be in violation. So if they have a compliance check and they fail that, this would allow the County Commission to rescind that license. Just another checks and balances for the County Commission to have on these temporary licenses. And the reason why it was brought forward now is because it's probably appropriate. As a PSA, there's been some confusion. We've had people who have malt beverage licenses apply for a temporary liquor license. They can't do that. Those haven't been in front of you because they pulled their application after they were advised that the State's Attorney's Office would be recommending denial for non-compliance. So I thought it was appropriate from a PSA standpoint to bring that up, that it has to be a license that coincides with what your current use is. So if it's a malt beverage license, you can only get a temporary malt beverage license, liquor license, temporary liquor license, the only one. Be a full-service restaurant, they can apply for any type of license that they wish, along with nonprofit organizations. They have.
Is there any questions for Mr. DeGroot?
No. Mr. Chair, I just appreciate Mr. DeGroot bringing this forward. I started working on this with Bill Golden when he was still here. So Bill helped write the text of this, and then when Bill left, we kind of lost a little bit of steam, but then Drew picked it back up again. Basically used the same template as many Haha County as well. Just so people, excuse me, just so folks understand, one of the changes in this is that it allows an already licensed licensee to be able to provide the service. So for example, if you already have a liquor license at your restaurant or your, you know, wherever, you can now go off-site, mobile or remote. And let's say Landscape Lawn and Garden Center wants to do a wedding, they no longer have to search for a civic charitable educational or fraternal or veterans group. They can also use somebody who's already licensed through the state of South Dakota. They've been vetted, they're in good standing. So now, for example, Landscape Lawn and Garden Center could host a wedding there, and they could partner up with JJ's to offer the service. So, and this actually puts us in compliance with state law now because we were out of compliance with the state statute before. Now we're in compliance, so.
I will add, the one thing we didn't add was hunting lodges to the temporary reservation because that's permissible, but we don't have any hunting lodges here in Lincoln County, so we didn't add that.
It wasn't a big hunting lodge constituency in Lincoln County. Pushing for us.
So that's why it's entitled a special event alcohol.
Correct, yep.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion?
Would there be any notification then or any paperwork required then for them if they are vetted and can just automatically hire any one of those that are ready to meet the qualifications?
There would be a public hearing process. We actually, I worked with the Auditor's Office. We revamped our application process, and we actually have a formal temporary license that will be given to the licensee at that point, too, instead of just a resolution. So we're making a little bit more formal process in conjunction with this resolution.
Is there any public input on this matter? If not, then I guess I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
A motion by Aaron's, second by Landine. Any discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Jibben.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, Mr. Timmerman, Emergency Management. I saw some pictures of you and the governor, so hopefully you have some good news for us.
Yeah, I, Harold Timmerman, Lincoln County Emergency Management, and this time I'll stick to the agenda item instead of getting off on a briefing like I did last week, so. Before you today, I have a disaster declaration resolution. It's a format we've used before, just reworded for the situation we're facing at this point in time. I can read it if you like, or have Shuri read it if you want, or if you're good with it as you see it before you, it's ready for your action.
Is there any public comment, otherwise we can move forward with it? Any public input on this matter?
This resolution then gets sent to our State Office in Pierre. Every county affected by this is doing the same thing. From when they all get to Pierre, the governor requests a presidential disaster declaration from the president, and hopefully that will happen, and he will grant that to us, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. A motion has been made by Mr. Aaron's, second by Landine to approve this. Any further discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Jibben.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, once this is signed, I'll get it to our Office in Pierre as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Jared.
Morning, Commissioners. Jared Narum, System Highway Soup. Here today looking for some board approval to rent some equipment for fixing our flood damage. We've got three or four bridges that are completely sitting on islands, so we're going to need some bigger equipment to get the job done. We're looking at procuring more dirt, stripping some hillsides, stuff like that from people so we can, because we don't have enough dirt, too. But that's kind of in the early process yet of securing that stuff. But early part is just to get all the equipment. Now, we're not going to have all the equipment at once. There's a few pieces of equipment that are going to be here, that'll probably be here for the duration, like a dozer and a packer. The Long Reach excavator is going to be used at one site currently, just because we have riprap that we placed in 2014 that is still there. We just have to go get it instead of having to buy all that material again, so. Yeah, just looking for approval. That way, when we want to use it, we can go get it.
Forgive my ignorance here, a sheep's foot compactor, how's that different than?
Yeah, so that one's its own power, it's under its own power, its own diesel engine. You sit on it and you ride it, and then you go down in instead of having to use a little wheel on an excavator.
So those ones with the spikes?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Jared, would this be something that you're looking to have supplement to your budget or just using it out of the budget?
Just using it out of the budget. And hopefully through the declaration and all that stuff, we'd be looking at reimbursement.
Gotcha. And the equipment is available? I mean.
So with the numbers that are there for the equipment rentals, those are guidelines, kind of, because we have to go by what equipment is available when we want to grab it.
Do you need them all the same month?
No, and we'll be using them in different processes, different areas. Like I said, the Long Reach, that thing is going to be coming for one specific job. The other ones, the dozer, the packer, those are going to be here for the duration of the stripping hillside, stuff like that to get dirt.
Do you know if there's any reimbursement for any of this?
As of right now, no. We don't, until the declaration and all that stuff with FEMA gets handled, until the feds tell us it's okay. They're going to do something.
Yeah, we basically just submit for reimbursement after the fact.
Correct.
Just got to foot the bill upfront.
Yep.
Right?
And, yeah, and so right now, we're probably three-quarters done with the whole entire county for FEMA and ER. So we're working with townships yet. The townships have been great getting out there, let us know damages to our bridges, but we're going around looking at all of our structures, all of our stuff, so we're about three-quarters done, so.
Any other questions for Jared? Public input on this matter?
Do we, got a question for you, Jared. Do we assist these townships at all? Or are they kind of on their own for fixing this stuff up?
So as far as bridges go, anything that's out on the bridges, we take care of those. We, any damages, any stuff like that, that's ours. I would say between me and Harold, we've been assisting the townships quite a bit through the FEMA process, helping them out. I know I fielded a lot of calls, I know Harold has also, but, so we're there for moral support, too. But as far as equipment goes, we got our own, you know what I mean? We got a lot of stuff we got to do ourselves, so.
Okay.
But I know we've helped before in the past on stuff with townships, and it was kind of, you know, it gets kind of buried in the mud when you're talking FEMA stuff and reimbursement for townships. We have to bill them to get, for them to get reimburseals on their stuff, so it kind of muddies the water a little bit with other government entities, so.
All right.
You talk about helping townships. Most townships don't have money in the bank to cover the damages they're going to have to fix. I told them point-blank, you may need to borrow money first to get the work done and then get your reimbursement afterwards. They've been good about getting their damage assessments in crisis track like Jared has done with the county, so that's the biggest help we've done for the township, is get them on the right track to get that done. Once they've got started on it, they all think it's the greatest thing in the world, so it does a lot of things for them, just by looking at your phone at a site, puts the GPS points in for them, takes a picture, it tells you, but how much gravel you're going to need, and how much base and what that's going to cost, does that all for you, so. It's been a big, big help. I've got one township that's need a little help, and another township is going to help them get started in it and get it all done, so. But that, we don't help the townships any more than that because, like Jared said, you get in the middle of a mess there if you try and do that, so. Any other questions, I'd be happy to answer later.
I think we have something like 59 gravel roads in Lincoln County, if I'm not mistaken, and a lot of them are in very tough shape, so I can see it's a concern by most of the townships. I guess, is there any other further discussion by this commission?
Public input.
If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Public input.
Any public, public comment?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Aaron's and a second by Landine to approve. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yep.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landine.
Yes.
Jibben.
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, Mr. Rambo.
John Rambo, Building Superintendent. First thing I have on here is just a general buildings update. I figured after a week of recovery from last week with all the water coming in the building, we've pretty much got things fairly dry. We've got a few dehumidifiers running down near Emergency Manager's Office. I was able to get the leak that we had coming in from the northeast corner, I was able to get a company to come in. We exposed the storm sewer that left, or the roof drain that left to go down to the storm sewer and did find that it was improperly sealed. There's what's called a leak stop that's supposed to be put as you penetrate a wall to go underground, and that was not installed. They kind of did basically a spray foam patch when that happened. So this leak has been kind of ongoing, it just, the flood made it much worse because it basically pushed back all that water. So we, now, we didn't do, we basically put in a chemical patch to stop it with a Benedite patch-type thing, and we're hoping that will resolve the issue. If this does not, we'll have to redig it again and cut the pipe, which will be a lot more difficult with it going underground and stuff. So this was our first approach, and so I'm hoping we have resolved that problem. As far as the other leak, a lot of that, we believe, was water penetration with it flowing, basically the river that was formed outside of the building here came into the building, but we have had continuous leakage in that space. And again, this was compounded. I believe, I don't want to do a whole lot of, we might cut the sheet rock to see what the wall looks like behind that, and this would be in Harold's office. We have some caulking issues in the building as it is, and I want to, and that project should be coming in the near future, so I would like to resolve that before I go too crazy and start digging up stuff outside the building here. Historically, that's been a very mild leak into the building, and this, again, the flood compounded it.
Do you have industrial fans, John, or do you rent industrial fans, something like this, I mean, to help drive areas out, or?
We had multiple floor fans running that we own, and I had four dehumidifiers running. There was some damage to like a countertop in the sheriff's bay or the deputy's bay that I think, I had to cut the holes into the bottom of the countertops because I could not remove it, and basically pushed air through them, through the holes. I think we will probably look at doing carpet replacement for those spaces, including Harold's office. I might consider going ahead and just putting up more of a tile flooring in the Harold's office, just because it has routinely had some water penetration, and it's probably the one office that has the most wetness smell yet, so for his comfort, I would probably consider pulling that out. I have, I've not made those calls yet, and I'm sure those people are pretty much inundated with calls of people wanting their flooring replaced, but I, I do have that in my budget to do flooring replacement already in the Sheriff's Department for this year, so I would just utilize some of that money to try to do that. That countertop, I guess, I haven't, I'll talk to Sheriff Swenson. It might be something that we probably should look at replacing that, that was repurposed from another project that we did about four or five years ago, and so it might be just time that we upgrade that furniture and go with something that's movable instead of something that's permanently mounted to the floor and the wall because of that issue. But that's also then, the other water penetration I didn't really discuss last week, it's, we did have some water penetration in the roof from the old courthouse, like we have had on only driving rains. Basically, it was some ceiling tile damage. I'll have to bring a lift in and try to see if I can figure out where that water's coming from yet. I think it's probably coming from an old leaky window sill. And then, of course, we, as we know, that there's always been that little bit of water penetration coming in up there in one of the valleys near the clock tower. So those two areas, again, with this amount of rain, had water come into the building. In the scheme of things, it was much less damaged than what we got down in the basement, though.
John, is all this damage reimbursable as well from FEMA?
Harold and I have just briefly talked about that. It's something we'll look into. I don't know if I remember right from my old days, I think that we might not reach the threshold for damage. I've also got calls to our insurance company to talk to them about this stuff, and I just, we've been kind of playing phone tag, so I'm supposed to call them as soon as I'm done with this meeting today to have those conversations with them as well. But yes, so the other quick update, I guess, for other buildings is that the 4H grounds of water has been installed. We're getting close, they're hoping, they were prepping for concrete for the wash racks yesterday. They don't think they'll pour today, but they hope to pour tomorrow. So as you know, all the buildings are up, the electricity was pretty much been all ran. They've got some connections to make to the panels, but it's definitely shaping up to where they should have the full facility usage for this year's Achievement Days, so they're all excited. But obviously, the flood has made a scramble on that, too. That site has dried up surprisingly very well. We actually had a horse riding event in there Sunday, which is really surprising to me considering it was just a week after having it underwater, so. So then the next, I don't really have an update, I'm sure Dave will be here, or if he's not for the airport because of that, he's on the agenda for that. But the next would be the highway shop, and that kind of jumps into the other agenda items if you want to.
Any questions you have for John on item five? I guess not, we'll move on into item number six then, concerning a fire suppression pump? Go ahead.
Yes, so prior to the actual big flood, our sump pit flooded at the highway shop, so about a week before that, which basically submerged our fire suppression pump. So what, the water, the water to basically pot out fires in the building are kept underground in tanks, storage tanks, and then there's a pump deep underground in a pit that basically energizes and runs that water into the sprinkler system. Well, that sump pit was flooded. It went into alarm, we came in, we weren't sure why it flooded. We did some research, we determined that what happened is, is there's some kind of transducer in the tank that talks to a control panel, and that tells it if it needs water or not from the, from a real water source. That failed, some part of that system failed, and it basically said it didn't have enough water, and it kept running water in the tank, which overflowed, and surprising to me, the overflow and the vent to the tank goes into that sump pit. So that's where all the water went, and it was full city or full real water pressure. So it basically, that's what flooded and ruined this sump pump, this pump. I've since looked into it, we've looked into options on how do we do this differently. One of the problems is, if you were to ventilate this straight outside and go right up on a parking lot, which kind of scene makes sense, it would probably airlock it, and it wouldn't be effective to use for what it needs to be used for, the tanks would airlock. So what we're recommending is, is we need to figure out what went wrong with the control system, but more so, what I'm here today for is I got to get this pump on order. Originally, I was being told it's a six-to-eight week lead time to get it in. Now, as of late last night and this morning, I have two of the companies that are saying that for an upcharge, they can get it here in 15 days. I, the way I was landing with it, Midwest Mechanical, who I have a working relationship, was low bid originally, and their original bid was $19,900 for this pump. That's just for the purchase of the pump and the installation of the pump. Their new proposal is $22,400, and I have a great working relationship with them, but they just don't really understand what failed, and they don't understand that part of the system. And the original installer for that system is Building Sprinkler Systems. Sorry, if I can get my sheets to separate her. So, yeah, Building Sprinkler, Inc., their original bid for the six-to-eight week lead time was $21,125. They were finally able to give me a lead time, so if they could get it in 15 days, their quote would go up $2,300, so it's $23,425. Or if we were to chose to put it off for a 20-day expedite, it's only $1,800, which would be $22,925 total purchase and install. My third place I reached out to was Hal Plumbing, and they were pretty much off the chart. They were about 10 grand more than these other two companies. So in my opinion, and I've talked to Terry about this, I would prefer, even though it's a little bit more money, it's about $1,000 more money, I'd prefer to go with Building Sprinklers, Inc., because they will, they understand it, they were the ones who installed it, and they're probably ultimately going to be who is going to have to help us figure out what, how to fix, why it caused, what happened. One of the things that we're thinking we're going to do is, once the tank, once the transducer or the control system is working, we will probably manually close the refill, and once the tanks are full, that'll give us full two tanks to fire suppression, and we're just going to have to monitor it. We'll either put in digital or electronic monitoring system to see if it ever decreases, but that should be substantial to put out any fire in the building, and then we don't have to worry about it overflowing. And then we don't have to worry about it overflowing off of domestic water again. Um, so yes, that's, I guess, in short, what I would recommend us doing is going with, uh, Building Sprinkler, Inc., um, for a fifteen day expedite at the cost of twenty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-three thousand four hundred and fifty?
Four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
What was for the other Mid- Midwest expedited?
It was twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars.
Thousand twenty-five difference. John, it sounds like, though, that you've come up with the, you may not figure out why it happened, but you have the most logical way in which to deal with it and make sure it doesn't happen again. And neither one of these have the time and, or their expertise into the, you're spending time trying to figure it out that would be above and beyond this?
Right, well, it will be above and beyond this, yes. It could be a very simple, if it's just the transducer, it could be a very cheap VIX. If it's the control panel acting up, it could be a, another couple thousand dollars easily now. And again, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to put additional monitoring system, whether it talks to our fire panel, or if it talks to G and R Controls' control panel, I can do it either way. We, you know, when Jared and I were notified that we had a problem, it just said there was some kind of a grounding problem. Well, it was grounded because the whole pump was underwater. I need to have something that tells me that I have water coming into it, simple as that.
Yeah, that'd be pretty easy to do, actually.
When it notifies you, is that an app you have on your phone or something?
Correct, yeah. I get, I have apps for building controls, and I have apps for fire system controls.
Any other questions for John by this commission?
Have you considered if this is warrants, uh, trying to turn it into insurance at all?
That's, again, I've, it's part of the conversation I will have with our insurance company.
I guess, uh, John is looking for board action on this matter. Uh, is there any other discussion by this commission?
Public input.
Yes, and do we have public input on this matter?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to adopt, uh, Mr. Rombo's recommendation.
Okay.
Can I, can I add one thing real quick? I, I, I don't know how I worded it in the, um, met, the agenda, but can I be the one who signs off on this so I don't have to chase down a signature? Because I'll have to get a clean copy of the proposal. I don't have that in front of me right now, I just have what they told me over the phone.
You can bring the proposal to me, and I can stamp it with your signature.
Okay.
There you go.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we do have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I have questions.
Okay, uh, what, any discussion or questions, please?
Yeah, John, I, I understand you're wanting to go with who you're recommending, or what's the name of that one?
Building Sprinkler.
Building Sprinklers. But again, the, the, as far as finding out is, you know, above and beyond this, so it's not included. Is there any doubt that Midwest would be able to replace this pump and get that portion back functioning the way it was prior to?
Uh, not really, I, 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 I've, I've got a great working relation with all those guys. Um, I pretty much know all of them through-
Sure.
-inspections here and there, it's just, ultimately, this company I probably will have to bring in anyway, Building Sprinklers, Inc., because Midwest Mechanical, Mid- or Midwestern Mechanical pretty much told me they just don't have the expertise in that part of the system, so I, it just seems a little bit weird.
Did Sprinkler, uh, um, I want to keep saying Midwest Sprinklers, Sprinkler, uh, Company indicate that we're going to get any break for having to bring them into, because we use them to replace the pump in the first place?
They didn't, they just, again, um, they're the ones who originally installed it, so I'd-
So, every, everything that they have to come in for is going to be above and beyond anyway, so.
Okay, we do have a motion, and we do have a second. Is there any discussion amongst the commission?
I just think that we're going to have to have them in anyway, it's going to be above and beyond, and a thousand dollars would go toward their bill that's going to have to come later to figure it out, but, so I, I'm going to not support this motion because I think we should go with the lower bid.
I will tell you, Mike, that, uh, um, I've been really impressed with them because the, the, the sales guy there has made multiple trips and has been helping me try to brainstorm how to fix this.
Which company, from?
The Building Sprinkler, Inc.
Sprinklers.
Whereas, again, I, I do like Midwestern Mechanical, but they haven't been nearly as active to help me pursue a res- a, a final result with this. So I, it's, I know it's another thousand dollars, but I will say that, uh, they've been impressive as far as their willingness to troubleshoot this problem with me.
I wish that maybe had been included into the proposal then, so we knew what kind of costs for those types of services to figure this out.
Have your questions been answered?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what, what is the motion, Madam Auditor?
The motion would be to authorize Building and Ground Superintendent to approve the purchase of a new fire suppression pump for the highway shop for building, from Building Sprinkler, Inc., in the amount of twenty-three thousand four twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. That being said, no other discussion, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
No.
Landin?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes, motion carried.
So, my final thing then is, is, uh, a- as you know, with the, the growth of the, the, the building and the moving offices around, we've had the intent of moving the veteran service officer up to the old WIC space, but that's kind of an open reception area. And we've been looking into the idea of putting a wall to, to give a confined office for privacy. Um, I reached out to, uh, three different companies again. I've really struggled to get anybody to come in and even look at this, because, um, it's kind of a small project for a lot of companies. Um, but ultimately, uh, uh, only per, only company that said they could do it all, including replace the ceiling tile, do the demolition, all that, is Huguenot Oran Construction. And they're saying that, uh, um, they can do it for seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That would be the, they also could do the door and the door hardware with that, which is by far the most expensive and mo- the, in my opinion, more difficult part of that project.
You, you're not asking for board action on this?
I need to, I can't move forward with, because I, I can't authorize that kind of an expenditure without your approval.
Okay, so you are looking for board action?
Could you just quickly explain what walls will be removed and how, what are we shifting around?
So, and, uh, as you come into that suite, uh, it was kind of subdivided, so there was some privacy from the walls itself, and, and, uh, we would remove that first level of privacy. So it's kind of in the, the front becomes a little open, more open to the public. And then, uh, as you round the corner to go where the WIC receptionist used to sit, it was kind of already set up as a, a modified office, just didn't have a door, had a, had about a five or six foot opening. And, uh, because then that person dealt directly with the public as they were there, well, we don't, that off, that position went away. And so, it just, there's just no way of giving any privacy to that space. It's a lot of open space now that could be utilized better, so that's what we're trying to do.
Well, some, excuse me. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, with moving the VSO, then, do we have a, a occupant for that space, uh, lined up too as well?
It's, yes, we've, part of the driving force with that has been, uh, the need for the detectives' department to have, uh, an additional private space for an individual. And we were looking at subdividing some of that space down there, which by itself was about the same price tag. Um, but, and that didn't resolve anything with the VSO, so.
John, I'm just, and this is something that just can't wait till we have more space with the new courthouse being opened up.
Um, I guess.
Steve Rasmussen, you're a commissioned administrative officer. So when WIC gave us notice, um, we were always, space has been a premium here at the courthouse. Um, and there's some additional asks, one was to bring HR under the same roof, uh, with their assistant. Uh, VSO, there's also been some, some concerns about people who are needing veteran services, whether they're handicapped, and it's difficult to get down in the basement to see Dave. So, uh, there was also an ask from the sheriff's department to be able to get additional, uh, workspace down there. We had just moved, uh, Game and Fish out of that office for the VSO. Uh, so this'll allow, uh, Dave to have those consultations in private, um, in that old WIC office. Uh, and it'll also allow him to co-locate with HR where he uses that same assistant. So that'll be good to have them on the ground floor. Uh, and it does solve some problems immediately for the sheriff's department, who has to do sensitive investigations that will require, uh, a closed office space. And this will allow us to get this done by moving Game and Fish back into the VSO office. And then that space they're currently occupied, which is co-located with the detectives' division, will allow for that privacy to occur without John having to add additional, um, delineators within the, the detective space. So it solves a lot of problems for a very minimal amount of money. Um, and, uh, relative to the, moving to the Lincoln County Justice Center, that's not going to affect, um, any of those that are going to be here. Uh, so, um, timing wise, like I said, John, took several months just to try and even find a, a vendor willing to do the work, uh, just because of the, the small amount of money involved, so that just gives you some context.
Thank you for the explanation.
Commissioner, I can put a sharper point on that for you, too. And I've talked to the sheriff about this, talked to John about this. Basically, the VSO needs to move because those detectives are detective, they need to conduct child sexual assault investigations. And it also includes investigation of child porn. And it's incredibly sensitive, and it needs to be done behind closed doors. That's number one. Number two is, the VSO has to conduct interviews with people in which they release HIPAA-protected, uh, private confidential medical information. So, when a person comes in and says, "I would like to apply for benefits," they have to tell the VSO what their specific medical conditions are. Again, has to be done privately behind closed doors, can't be done out in the open. Um, and then also, there may be an issue, um, with regard to, um, handicap access, wheelchairs, et cetera. Of course, they can use the elevator, we are compliant, but it's just another extra level of offering the service on, at this time, on the first primary floor here, rather than requiring those people to push downstairs. But, bottom line upfront is, there's two employees, three employees that need to conduct their mission for the county behind closed doors.
Yeah, my question is just, uh, unfortunately, it's not a very large amount of money. Um, I just was curious if it was a timing, if we've held off this long, if it could have held off for a couple of years when, once the board has a better under, ability to grasp how much space is or is not available in, in here once the new courthouse. But I will support it, it's, it's something we need, I just was kind of curious if it was a matter, if it could wait, so.
Your, your recommendation is Huguenot Oran Construction, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Well, and, and I agree overall with Commissioner Poppins is that we need to get a better handle through a capital improvement plan and through a facilities management plan of what our usage is going to look like. We know that we've got, um, we're going to have a lot of employees moving over to the new courthouse. We know we're going to have a lot of space opening up, we need to get our arms around that. And no, when we start with the end in mind, it allows us to backwards plan and determine a budget, space needs, and do all the analysis, so that we don't end up doing these, what I call, pop-up projects like this. Um, you know, we spend seven K here, we spend ten K here, and then we end up. Now, in this instance, I'm not too concerned about it, not only because of the missions and job duties that these people are performing, but, um, when you put the door in over there, just results in a new office space that would have been created anyway. So, I think there's relatively little harm here in, you know, spending a little bit of money now, um, in, in contrast with, are we spending money only to find out that later on we need to do something different? So I'm not worried about that happening here in this specific instance, but overall, we got to get a better handle on what, what are facil-, you know, what our space needs are going to look like once folks start moving out to the new courthouse.
Would they be able to do the work soon, or you have no idea?
It sounded like they could have done the work fairly soon, but I, again, with what happened here in the last week, I don't know, I, that we could be way down a list of other jobs now, but.
Okay. I guess, uh, is there any public input on this matter? If not, do we need a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Landin and a second by Aaron's to approve. Any discussion? If not, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landin?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Motion carried. Next, um, is Dave here? I don't see him.
So, Dave Myers, the airport manager is indisposed today, is, is hosting AMC Geo out at the airport for two days onsite consulting with, uh, stakeholders, uh, so I'll cover this item. Um, so, the south ramp was bid, um, and that was, that occurred on May fifteenth. Uh, Sioux Cup Construction was the lowest bidder at eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand eight, uh, seventy-eight, uh, for the south ramp. Uh, this, uh, accepting this notice is contingent on the CIP funding, uh, from what we understand from Helms Engineering, our consultant. Um, it is, uh, it will be approved, and we'll be getting, uh, a ninety percent funding on this for, from the FAA, and, um, SD DOT will provide five percent, and that would be for reimbursement. Uh, so that is, uh, the nature of this, and then, once the notice is, uh, approved by the board, then we'll write up agreements with, uh, Sioux Cup. Uh, they're planning on August first groundbreaking would be the, the current timeframe.
Do we have an idea when we would get this money back from the FAA?
Since it's for this year, it would be as soon as we, um, I would think within another six weeks or so is when they-
Six weeks?
Somewhere in that timeframe, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Pardon?
Who else bid, who else bid the project?
Uh, there was two others, uh, it was managed by, um, Brooke Edgar, so I don't, I don't have them, I know it was on a prior, um, agenda, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
All right, thank you.
Any questions by this commission?
Uh, Steve, do you, if you remember, I think, and I'm going to get myself in trouble probably, but I believe that actually the bids were very competitive in comparison to what the estimates were, to a point where, I think, possibly up to a hundred thousand dollars, what?
Yeah, Sioux Cup is about a hundred less than what was, a hundred thousand less than what was estimated for the cost, so.
Some positive news in the build, bidding arena, so.
Right. And there's some efficiencies, too, there's an additional add-on, uh, with it, which will allow with the, it'll save us on the mobilization. Uh, so there's some cost savings there as well. And if that is not covered within this CIP, it would be on next year's, um, they've already said that that would be something that would be reimbursable, so.
Okay, any other questions? If not, is any public input? And if not, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to approve the, uh, low bid of Sioux Cup Construction for eight hundred seventy-eight thousand, um, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by Poppins, second by, uh, Aaron's, is there any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Poppins?
Yes.
Landin?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, uh, Tracy?
Good morning, uh, Tracy Humphrey, HR Director, uh, bringing to you a request from the state's attorney's office. Um, they have three positions that will be made vacant by the end of July. Um, they're requesting to, permission to fill these positions, um, prior to being made vacant if there's a qua- excuse me, a qualified candidate. Um, the overlap would require maybe up to one to three weeks. Um, there would be no modification to the annual budget, but since we do not have a policy to hire, um, overlapping staff, I'm bringing that to you on their behalf.
So we'd be paying someone overlapping three weeks?
Up to, more than likely, given the fact that it's July first, probably would be only one week, is, um, is we're still in the process of the recruiting.
So apparently, they have someone in mind?
Yeah, we have, yeah, like I said, we have three positions open, and we've, uh, made offers to two individuals for one, uh, for two of them, and then still have one that's open, um, and we're actively recruiting, so. But up to three weeks if we found the right person, but more than likely, just be one.
Questions by this commission?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I yield.
It, it says in here in the fax embedding, it says the overlap would be between one to three weeks, but it would not modify the annual salary budget due to tenure differences. Basically, because they're hiring new people that don't have as much time in, so we don't pay them as much. So basically, it's going to be a wash, is what they're saying.
Okay, it's good to know. Any others?
Did, uh, the state's attorney's office indicate if it was because of, they wanted efficiencies in the transition, or was it to be able to recruit the person that they wanted and they want to get started sooner?
Great question, so it's for efficiency purposes, given the- So it's for efficiency purposes, given the specialization of some of the positions. Felt that that would be the more successful way for the department to transition. So again, like Commissioner Aaron said, there is no request for modification to the salary budget, but since we don't have a policy for overlapping of staff, we wanted to bring it to formal board action.
Is there any public input on this matter? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion by Aaron's, and a second by Poppins, for the purpose of discussion.
My question, my question is regarding how we handle two additional people in there. It's pretty packed currently, so how would we handle that transition for the week of who's sitting where?
Great question. Normally, for staffing purposes, when you're training, you're going to have someone sit there at the desk with them. So, I know one of the positions.
They'll just share an office.
They'll just share an office space, yeah, which is, the goal is to do that training and pass over that information.
What are the three positions we're talking about here?
Two, two paralegal positions, and one deputy state's attorney. Our civil, it's the, a civil and a criminal paralegal, hence the, so we have two different aspects of the office, plus an attorney.
Thank you for the explanations.
Good, thank you. All right, we do have a motion and a second. I guess, is there any other discussion? We've had public input already, so I guess, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landin.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes. Motion carried.
Yes, so this is board action to adopt a new heat illness prevention policy. So, last year, it was brought to our attention that our current safety policy lacked adequate addressing of heat, and what to do, and to make sure that our staff and our managers are ensuring that our employees are safe regardless of the temperature. So this is one of our first steps, is to do a heat illness prevention policy. I worked with the Safety Committee, and with legal, in consultation with, while we're not required to follow OSHA, we're looking at OSHA guidelines and other things to be preventative for our employees. So, bringing this for you is also part of a conversation we had with one of our unions, that they, they had particular concern about this, so wanted to bring it to you all, as, to recommend this adoption of this policy. It will go as Section 21, under hazardous weather, for our new, our safety handbook.
I guess, have you visited with other counties in regard to this?
Yeah, so I'm fortunate enough to engage with the other HR directors throughout the state on a monthly basis. Thus far, most of them don't have a fairly robust heat illness prevention policy, so consulted with them, and I imagine they'll be reaching out and asking for a copy of my policy, or our policy, if this is to be adopted.
Is this relatively new, or has this been, I guess, on people's directories for years, or?
So the federal, like with OSHA, and national safety, they have been looking extensively at the impact of heat, and particularly in manufacturing and agricultural, but they overall have had a really strong initiative over the last three years. It has been a policy that has been, sort of, everyone always has a heat policy, but this is taking in consultation with those. So it has been a concern, I have noted at least one year prior to my tenure here, but it was brought up last year, and I want to be mindful and caretaking for our employees. Essentially, what it does is just bring them information to say, here's your personal responsibility, and then our responsibility as employers is to ensure that you have adequate breaks, make sure you're staying hydrated, and knowing, it tells managers what to do if there were to be signs of heat stroke or heat illness.
So, this policy is something that you've talked to others from other counties and came up with this, or did we duplicate someone's?
So, no, we synthesized information from OSHA, a couple other counties, as well as, I consulted with SDML, our Workers Compensation Group, to get safety guidelines from them, since, you know, obviously, if there is a heat illness, really, a heat illness that our employee would have workers' compensation, so figured it's a good group to consult with as well.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I'm just looking at this thing here. It looks pretty vanilla. It doesn't impose a lot of requirements on the county. I think there's only two, two requirements imposed on the county through this policy. It says the county will provide cool water to employees, and then it says we'll provide a couple breaks per day. Basically, I think it just puts in writing what all of our managers are already doing, and if they're not, now they will. It's pretty common sense stuff, so. I don't see anything too strenuous, in terms of what the county has to do here, moving forward.
Any other questions by this commission? If not, public input on the matter? I guess then, we're ready to entertain a motion.
Chairman, not allowed for a motion to ratify this into our policy.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Poppins, and a second by Aaron's. Any discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landin.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Before we go to our work session, do we need to go into executive?
We need to go back to the motion that we added to the agenda.
Yes.
Yep, that's why I came up here.
Thank you.
Do you want to read what that motion would be?
Yeah, board action to cancel the tax deed sale on parcel number 100, period 50, period 76, period A017.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And would we be authorizing the transfer to Blue Spruce Road District at this time?
We'd do that at a later time. This would just be authorizing the cancellation of the sale.
Okay, does everyone understand the motion, and what's at stake here? Okay.
You know, Mr. Chair, I'm comfortable with doing this outside of regular order, because all it does is implements the status quo right now, and it just hits the pause button on the transfer, so. I, I think that remedies any kind of transparency issues there with doing it out of order, so I'll support it.
Any other input by the commission? Okay, we need a motion, Drew, correct?
Is there any public input on it?
Is any public input? Saying none, I guess then we're ready for a motion, correct?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Aaron's, second by Landin. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Poppins.
Yes.
Landin.
Yes.
Gibbon.
Yes, motion carried. Now, before we go into our budget work session, is there any, I guess, public comment? Please limit it to five minutes. State your name and address, please.
National, good morning, Bryce Healy, with Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. Personal address is Southern Sioux Falls, office is downtown Sioux Falls. I'm here more for informational purposes, but I have to first of all, say wow to great staff that you have in dealing with the emergency. We, as staff, get to attend many of these meetings after this most recent disaster, and you've got a top-notch staff. And so I need to be complimented them, and you as a commission, with approving these things. So informational, obviously, we will get past this disaster. August 20th is the Southern Tour of Sioux Metro Growth Alliance. We just had one for Minnehaha County a couple of weeks ago, which was hugely successful, but August 20th is the date of that. Because of the disaster, we are still in the process of finalizing the agenda, but the communities that'll be involved are T., Harrisburg, Canton, Worthing, Lennox, and Centerville. Centerville is because of the southern part that Sioux Metro Growth now also incorporates and works with, but you will be getting formal invitations to that, both commissioners and staff, but wanted to present that to you today, just to kind of get it ahead and on your agenda. But thank you for the time, and, but again, kudos to your staff in Lincoln County.
Any questions?
I'm not prepared to answer any, so hopefully not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input on non-agenda items?
Betty Otten, T., South Dakota. I just want to correct that it's not five minutes, it's three minutes for public comment. And I am going to, I want to do a shout-out for the, let's see where we're at here. Last night, Big Papa Food Truck came to town, to, to the community, and they served almost 700 meals last night. So I just wanted to commend them for coming in, and for the Canton United Methodist Church for hosting that. And then, from last week, when we did the audit, I wanted to put this in writing, so that people could actually go out and look at that, for the ballot description, or for the audit, for the 5%. And Minnehaha County did theirs for the entire count, but the very top one, if you go out to that, for the Secretary of State's office, you can, you can see every one of those people that did the, the hand counts and turned it in. There were minor discrepancies found in only three counties, Mallett, Minnehaha, and Lincoln, but Minnehaha, after she did the entire thing, per auditor, Lea Anderson, she said discrepancies found during Minnehaha County audit wouldn't have swung elections between a hand count of more than 13,000 total ballots cast in the June 4th primary, and the totals tabulated by the machines. I stuck in McPherson, because they had a second audit rectified errors after hand counting. Hand counting of all of the June 4th primary ballots in McPherson County proved the process as a waste of time and money, stated McPherson County State's Attorney, Austin Hoffman, after a secondary audit of ballots on Tuesday. The review blatantly showed hand counting of ballots is far more inaccurate than the tabulators are. And then our own Lincoln County, presentation by Sheri Lund, regarding the Lincoln County post-election audit results, on the website that I put up here, which is the Lincoln County YouTube, was at approximately 53 minutes, but you can review the entire presentation. This hand-counted audit of 10% of all ballots took about three hours, and proved that machine ballot counters are reliable and trustworthy. The audit removed one vote from Richard Vasgaard, added one vote to Carly Lemson, removed one vote from Brandt Jankert. And of note, for election integrity throughout this state, as auditors adhere to codified law in doing their hand-counted audit reviews, the proof is in the pudding that using the machine ballot counters are reliable, and should put to rest any, any, that they are untrustworthy or unreliable. The group that actually called for election integrity for these past several years applauded by bringing this to pass. South Dakota was only one of a few states who didn't have a post-election audit. I was there to observe for a while, and a huge shout-out to both Sheri Lund, our auditor, and Kayla, who did an amazing job of organizing and setting the audit up. Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you. Good information. Any other public input? If not, commissioners, anything to report?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Bryce Healy for showing up. The Sioux Metro Growth Alliance tour now has been going on for a couple of years. It's a great opportunity for commissioners to, and other staff, to meet with local area businesses, so I highly encourage any of the commissioners who want to be, who are interested in doing it, it is worth your time. You don't have to commit the whole day if you don't want to, if you just, you don't want to commit to your district or whatever, because of other prior commitments, it's better to at least just get an opportunity to get a taste, if you can't get the whole thing. So, highly encourage it, it's a really good event to go to. And I can tell you, the businesses really do value and look forward to having us there when we're there, because any opportunity they get to, to talk about their business just creates opportunities for us to echo after the fact. So I would just encourage fellow commissioners to do that. And then just lastly, had great conversations with city councilmen from the city of Canton here, about how the flooding not only affected the city, but the county as well, on the northern border, as well as Highway 135, where they've got some concerns, where it's a county highway, runs into the city here. They're worried about some drainage issues. Paul Garbers and myself talked, I talked to Chris York. Those guys, I know they're very appreciative of the, the food trucks and all that that came in. They also mentioned that they're very appreciative of the contact and communication they've had with Harold Timmerman, and what he's doing for emergency management. The big thing they wanted to reiterate, though, is we all hope in the future, we don't need to do food trucks. We need to get the problem solved. And we won't ever solve flash flooding, but we can start to work on these issues of how the rain, how floodwaters get channeled in and around the city and through the county, because it's starting to have an impact on public infrastructure. And we, York and myself and Garbers, we talked about putting together a task force of county, county folks, city folks, township representatives, of being able to get together, people from the DOT, emergency management, getting together and starting to get our arms around this, because Lincoln County serves as a collection basket for all that drainage from the city of Sioux Falls. But then, Lincoln County also serves as a collection basket for all the water coming from T., Harrisburg, Lennox. It all moves from northwest to southeast, in order to get to the Big Sioux River. And it's only going to, it's only going to get worse into the future, so we got to get our hands around it, and I'm glad I was able to talk to the folks from city of Canton about that, so.
Thank you. Any other commissioners, if anything, to report?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. I had the opportunity to travel out to Pierre with a couple of our staff, and Commissioner Schmidt, to address the Department of Transportation concerning a $15 million loan for the purposes of the 85th Street interchange. After deliberation of the board, it was unanimous that they did award us a $15 million, 1.5% 10-year note. I believe it'll be on their agenda next week to discuss the TIF that would be the backing for repayment of this, but it was another step in the process to get to fruition of over a 15-year project of an interchange at 85th Street. So it was a positive day, they had a lot of good questions. Fortunately, all the staff was able to answer them perfectly, so it was a productive day, although the Pierre drive is always not one of my favorite things to do, but it made it enjoyable with the people that I rode with. Secondly, I believe the staff and counselors in T. did ratify a rezoning request for the property that was previously designated as a potential site for a county jail, that we have since deemed as surplus property, so hopefully that's coming along, and to the point where we see a fruition of over, about a $400,000 net gain to the textures in Lincoln County. I will request, moving forward, if that does happen, that we utilize those funds for the purposes of trying to improve drainage in and around the county, or at least funding studies at a minimum, so that we can try to address some of these things. In light of the recent rain, there's an overabundance of locations that could use assistance, although $400,000 does not go very far into that, but it would be a step in the right direction, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any others? If not, I guess we'll move on then to our work session on the budget, and.
Forgive me, Mr. Chairman, I do need to leave, so, thank you.
You're welcome. With that being said, I think we'll go ahead and call. I know you've done a lot of work on this, so we'll let you go ahead and take over, and I think we're starting with the State's Attorney's Office, correct?
I think we'll have a, we might have a slight change. I think the sheriff is going to go first now, the, and then, so we'll do sheriff, jail, 911, and 24/7, then state's attorney, EMS, and IT. Just one point, I was, I'm trying to clear up some of my notes from last budget session. I know there was some discussion on the, the proposed parking lot that we had talked about, that was in the Buildings and Grounds budget, but I don't believe we ever came to a final consensus on, on including it or not. So if, if you have thoughts now, or if you'd like to clarify or come to a consensus quick, I can add it to my notes, or you can take it back and think about it further, and we can discuss it again next week as well.
Is there a preference by this commission?
I, I guess I-
I guess I'd like to see it out for next year. I don't, we don't know if we need it, it's $300,000, it's a lot of money for a few parking spots. I just don't know that there's a need, at least not right now.
Well.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, we've got a $700,000 budget deficit and we need to take a step back and got to try to figure out where all these capital improvement projects play in the future. I mean, sure, I think an argument could be made that if you appease the city of Canton, create some new parking spots, maybe that creates strategic opportunities around, you know, where the city could help us in other places. But I'm sure we can get that cooperation without having to spend a bunch of money for right now. So I think it's bridged too far at this point.
I think parking obviously has always been a problem here at this location. I guess I'd like to see something done, but not at that price. So I guess I can, I guess I can improve the idea that if needs to be wait, to wait for in the future, we can do that too. So anyway, let's move on.
Okay, thank you.
Morning, Steve.
Morning. Steve Swenson, Lincoln County Sheriff. All right, I wasn't here last week, so I'm not sure how you guys went through these.
The old form is page 18, but again, might be different in our logs, but go ahead.
Okay, we'll start off with the sheriff's budget. If you guys want to open up with questions. Our big increases, our insurance is a $27,000 increase. That's just due to more vehicles and the premiums going up. Fees and contracts is a $17,000 increase. That's due to our CAD system. It was a licensing issue, we didn't have enough licenses and basically was discovered in an audit by Zirker Technologies or Central Square.
So how much increase are both of those items?
The insurance is $27,000, the fees and contracts is $17,000. That also includes that we need to do an upgrade on our radio system. The city of Sioux Falls and Minnehaw County encrypted their radio system, which now we can't hear them. So it's honestly, it's an officer safety issue. It's $10,000 to fix it for us to encrypt ours. And that just allows us, we're not going to encrypt our radio traffic at this time, just programs our radio so we can hear their radio traffic. They've approved it, they want us to have it, obviously. It's, the issue is if a deputy's two miles from a city officer, a Minnehaw County deputy that needs help, we wouldn't know, and that's a problem. So that is a $10,000 fix for us. Training, we'd like to send one of our detectives to Tennessee for a, it's a six-week training program on processing crime scenes, investigating homicides, analyzing evidence. It would be a huge step in the right direction for investigations.
Is that all, new hires, you do that with them?
No, 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 it would be, we'd like to send in one detective this year and honestly, one detective, or not this year, next year, and one detective the following year to get them both certified in that training. Computer software, this is a $10,000 increase for, it's a one-time purchase of software for our investigative bureau to purchase an Internet Crimes Against Children. It's just to upgrade our abilities to investigate crimes against kids. And then it's also a program to help us download phones, the newest, greatest update.
So that's up 10% or?
I have all those percentages following here, so let's see. Computer software. No, it's going to be up considerably. We were at $2,000 last year, so it'd be $12,000 this year. So way more than 10%. I can't do the math in my head that fast. Motor vehicles, we're looking, so we drove 415,000, 416,000 miles in the last 12 months. Basically, that's four cars at 100,000 miles a car. If that's, my goal would be to get rid of the cars at 100,000. They've proven to be much more valuable on resale. So that's to replace four vehicles. I'm asking for seven. Replace four vehicles, we've added the SRO in Harrisburg, so that person will need their own vehicle. And then transferring the two hybrid vehicles to the State's Attorney's Office and replacing those with gas-powered vehicles. So that's what the big increase there is. Just a little background on cars, the Ford Explorer, Chevy Pickup, Chevy Tahoe are about the only, well, actually Dodge Wrangler is no longer making that either. So those are the only three vehicles that are police-rated. They're all within a few hundred bucks of each other. So we've elected to go with the Tahoe and the Chevy Pickup. We just haven't had a lot of luck with the Fords. And they're just, it's more a vehicle and I think the resale is going to be much better in the end. All other items stayed the same or adjusted 3%. And then salary increases were based on the union contract. We did have, we did add the additional officer for the SRO, which Harrisburg is picking up 70%, which you guys approved a few months ago or a month ago.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, you know, I've talked, I served as a liaison in the sheriff's department. I talked to Steve about his budget. It all pretty much looks in line. If you look at the first page of his presentation where he gives the, these are basically the only things that, what he's got here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, the five things are basically the things that exceed 3% or the cost of inflation is what he pointed out. The insurance is what it is. Frankly, the insurance pays for itself because this last year had a number of motor vehicle issues. We just had a deputy trying to save somebody and his vehicle got washed down the river or whatever. So that's just what happens in inherently dangerous occupation is there's just going to be some things like that. So fees and contracts, this CAD system. I mean, basically what that alludes to is city of Sioux Falls, you can't listen to them on the scanner anymore. But when you share, I mean, this is my thing. When you share a jurisdiction with, like in a metropolitan form of government, like what it seems like we're going towards, you got to be able to talk to the people, you know. You just, if you can't talk to them and you can't crosstalk with somebody that you've got to come to the assistance of, you're going to have problems. Training, yeah, that's, you know, they need to be trained. The computer software thing is just a one-time thing, but it's for that ICAC program. And let me tell you what, we got a lot of sickos out there. These people are disgusting and they need to be locked up. The only way to, and they all perpetrate these crimes over the internet and you got to be able to figure it out by using the technology to do it. Steve with the motor vehicles, this is maybe where you and I have to agree to disagree. You know, I think maybe you could, you know, looking at the, I kind of went out there and looked at what other counties around the nation are doing in terms of their mileage. And I do appreciate the fact that, you know, we're keeping that mileage at or below the national average for what a lot of other departments do. I think that does improve safety. I think, you know, it's like what Steve said. When you factor in on the backside what the resale value is of a vehicle at 100 or 115,000 miles as opposed to at like 135 or 140, you know, would I pencil this thing out to maybe go another year on those vehicles? Probably, that put us, you know, I think we'd be in line with kind of the national average for sheriff's departments then. But I don't think it's outside the realm. It's not unrealistic is what I'm saying. So I, you know, I think the purchase is in line, so.
Well, I know our emergency management person is asking for new vehicles. Well, could one of your vehicles be used by him? Because you surely end up sometimes at the same place, don't you, at the same time or?
We do, however, he kind of requires the, well, I don't know if he requires it, I'll have to talk to that himself, but he pulls our command post, which we can't pull with a half-ton or a Tahoe. So he requires a three-quarter ton pickup, which is very beneficial in emergency situations where you have a bigger truck. And frankly, we need a three-quarter ton to pull the command post. And Harold, correct me, I'm wrong, but I think his vehicle has almost 200,000 miles on it.
It's 158,000 right now.
158,000?
Yeah.
It's getting up there too.
Are we sliding that into your budget here, Steve? Or are we putting that, Harold, are you requesting that in your budget?
I've got it in my budget and there's been some indication by the sheriff's office I may even want to keep my vehicle just for the purpose of pulling that command trailer.
When Harold's not around?
Yeah, could I get another one?
Anything, Commissioner?
No.
And just to touch a little bit on the hybrids, I spoke with the major of the highway patrol and they've gutted all their hybrids and got rid of them because they were such a maintenance nightmare. We're starting to see that because of the way we drive them. I think that would be a good transition to the State's Attorney's Office, which is, would just be used as a vehicle to run around and do investigations. It's not a high-speed, hard braking, all the cop stuff that we do with them. They're just not going to hold up and I think that's a good fix for two departments, quite frankly.
Steve, I used to drive a Chevy full, or my kids did. It's a great kid vehicle to go back and forth from school because you didn't ever use gas and you plug it in. But I don't think it's built for law enforcement.
Probably not, probably not. Do they float well?
Well, we tried a lot of things, never that.
Yeah, and just an update on that, the insurance company is settling with us for 28,000 on that Explorer. It's a total loss. And we're not adding any additional vehicles with, for that incident. We're just going to basically suck it up because we're already asking for enough here. But it's, it is a total loss and the equipment in the vehicle will be reimbursed. We've sent in an estimate of $22,000 because all the electronics are underwater. All right, if no more questions on that one, we'll go to the jail. Again, wages are, the increase is based on the union contract. Insurance, same thing, the increases that have happened to the county. Training, again, we're, we've sent a couple of our, one of our sergeants with the courthouse staff and a CO to Texas for courthouse security. Now to become fully certified, we want to send the sergeant to Las Vegas for the certification for the courthouse security. So that's the increase in the jail training. I left the prisoner care the same, so there's no increase on that. It's going to be, it's going to be super close though. And so I would be, I'd be lying to you if I said that I think it's going to make it because our inmate numbers are increasing. They'd stay pretty steady. We're at 60 today, I've budgeted for 61. I've been, Minnehaw County did notify me that there will be no increase this year for housing, so it'll be $112 per day per inmate. So the $2,452,800 is 61 inmates average for next year and we're at 60 right now. So if you want me to increase that or supplement if need be later next year, that's my only fear is it's, it was, we were around, when I did this budget, we were averaging between 45 and 50. And of course, over the last two months, it's increased to the 60, 60, 57 to 60.
What'd you budget for last year, how many?
Same, 62, but the cost was a little different. It was a little less, I think it was 109.
Steve, I notice in here that, and I understand it, I think maybe it's a philosophical issue, but maybe a budgetary issue, that you moved some of your wage and the chief deputy wage to the jail side. You know, maybe, I think when folks look at these budgets and there's an argument to be made on both sides of this, right? Can't we just say this guy, employee gets paid all one thing and keep it all in one budget even though you spend time, you know, over here doing another thing? Can you just talk, because I think we had this conversation the other day and what we were, not with regard to you, but with regard to another department. I think it was Buildings and Grounds where we were going to just keep everybody's, we wanted to split wages between Buildings and Grounds and the airport. And I think what we all decided there was, well, let's just keep it all within Buildings and Grounds so it's just easier for accounting purposes. Can you just kind of walk me through the reason of wanting to put part of your wage in the jail versus just keep it in one department?
And it really was just to try to be more accurate for what the, what our workload is and what budget it was coming out of. I have no objections to either way. It's, I actually, quite frankly, I think it's probably easier for the auditor if we just do it out of one budget. So I just think it's, the courthouse, jail, and courthouse security is a pretty time-consuming portion of the job where the chief deputy and I spend at least 20% of our time dealing with that kind of stuff. But if it's, if it's not a thing for the commission, it's not going to hurt my feelings one way or the other. I just think it's a more, just gives us a little more accurate, especially with us splitting up now. I think it's going to be more time-consuming, but you could sell me either way. It's all coming out of the same pot.
One of the, one of the problems was, it was two different funds. One was the general fund, one was the airport fund. And it'd be one manager splitting his time. So that was, it's a little bit different than with what Steve's got. Steve, it's, he's in control of the time and it's all under the general fund.
Yeah, no, I agree. I mean, you could even create, you could even create another department for command staff and then put it in that budget and then, I mean, you could do, you could split this thing six ways from Sunday.
Absolutely.
Right? I don't think anybody takes away from you, you're spending a lot of time on this correction stuff. I mean, with the average daily population of like 61 people. I'm just thinking for regular people who, taxpayers who scrutinize the budget, they kind of look at it and they're like, well, how come this guy's got 80% over here, 20% over here, right? You know, it's not taking anything away from you all. It's just a matter of like transparency, like, okay, this is how much, you look at one place and you know how much one guy gets paid, right?
Right.
That's just how I'm looking at it, regular taxpayer view.
And I don't object to it if we could split, maybe to put the chief deputy on the jail and leave me on the sheriff's office or just do it, do it with both of us in the sheriff's offices.
Steve, would anything for grant funding look at the different individual budgets and say, this is what you spend in wages and maybe to where you would want, it'd be a benefit to have them split?
You know, I, one of the, one of the things I'm going to start looking into is the cops grant, which funds officers for three or four years. But I doubt that would affect it.
But if somebody was to come in and do a study and say, what is the jail actually, the jail division of the county actually costing you, there's the benefit of having it split?
I think the benefit is that it makes the county know realistically we're spending $3.5 million a year for the jail courthouse security. And as that continues to grow somewhere along the line, probably long after I'm gone, that number's going to justify building their own facility.
Well, and we split that out to be more accurate and try and track those costs better if memory serves me.
And we do, and then to Commissioner Aaron's point, when the wages are printed at the beginning of the year, they're not shown in a split, right? They're just shown as by the person.
Right.
So I don't know if people. I like the, I like the split, obviously it was my idea, so I like it. But it was to be more accurate.
Your department too.
Yeah, to be more accurate, to be more accurate on what departments. You know, honestly, and to Joel's comment as well, we could, honestly, I spent a lot of time on 911. So, but I didn't split it a third time, so I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is.
Because how many times are you going to split it?
Yeah.
You know, you technically would have to split it towards every place that you do it in order, you know, if accuracy is the goal, then we got to split. You know, you, you, you technically would have to split it towards every place that you do it in order, you know, if accuracy is the goal, then we got to split it to every department.
Yep.
Otherwise, we're not being accurate then.
Prisoner medical costs, do they stay pretty consistent every year, or how, how do you come up with that figure?
It's, it's just a kind of a rolling average to say, our, our jail commander works very close with the state's attorney's office and the, and the court system. That when we have people that have medical issues or surgeries coming up, if we can get those people out of jail, so it's not on our dime, but there's some people we can't. And I think we just had a, and I'm not sure where we're at this year, but we're...
70,000, I think it is?
I don't know how much we've spent.
Well, I don't know about this year.
We've had a couple of big surgeries this year, so that, that number is, is a, is a safe number. It could be 50,000 and be supplemented as well, but it, it's a, it's a pretty safe number.
Where, where do we bring them for medical care? Is it?
Either Rivera or Sanford.
Either one of those, yeah, that's what I assumed. Any other questions for Steve?
One thing I didn't cover on this, this does ask for an extra corrections officer for next year, and that would be a hire that we would do later on in the year. We need to get, our front security here is getting close, Lowell's cutting back now to two days a week, so we need to actually replace that person with a full-time person because that's what we're going to need at the new facility. So we figured we'd hire it later next year, get him trained up, because it'll, that facility will require an extra CO for the control room, which we don't currently have. And the control room is the moving of inmates through the holding cells into courthouses. That will be controlled by a, a person in a control room, running a computer to unlock doors in secure areas. So it's, it's a jail, but it's not a jail, but it will require an additional staff member to, to manage that.
All right.
Steve, how many, probably not relevant to this year's budget, but next year, how many folks are you thinking you're going to need to staff the new courthouse?
So, so recommendations from, from the whole line of security is two people at the front desk, which we currently only use one. One person would be in the control room. We have three CEO, or CEO, COs in the 24/7 EM and... 24/7 EM and courthouse transport, Jamie, Casey. So yeah, three. And then we have two part-time. So I don't know where that left me at.
Are you just, you're just thinking right now, though, you need the one new FTE? I mean, you're going to take that out, you're going to take most of those numbers out of Hyde, right?
Out of what?
Out of Hyde, pre-existing.
Yeah.
They already exist. They're already FTEs authorized.
No, no, this would be an additional one.
Okay.
So it'd be a, it would be a fourth CO, then we have the sergeant, lieutenant, and there is some discussion whether that, this position should be an actual deputy position. So we have someone in, in the courthouse function with arrest powers. So that's, that's the one up in the air, which is a considerable difference in pay, like 22 to 29 an hour.
Right.
So that's, that's the one thing. I, I think I, I think I budgeted for a deputy for the, for that versus a CO.
So one new deputy?
Correct. So for the new building, this is with the thought of us getting rid of the security out here.
Yeah.
Is that we would need one additional full-time employee for that building?
Right. Is, now, you know, is the thought that eventually if Lowell's going down to two days, you mean like two days per week is what?
Correct.
Is he eventually retiring then, or?
I'm assuming.
That's the thought?
Right.
Okay, all right.
But it's nice to have a, a part, a part-time budget there for help out, for sick leave, vacation.
Right.
Murder trials, which we've got some coming, but it's, it's, the part-time employees are very inexpensive for us because we don't pay all the benefits.
Right.
But it's not nearly as, I mean, we need something more dependable.
Right, okay.
Electronic monitoring fees, is that Minnehaha County's fee that they charge us?
Uh, no, that is the rental on the bracelets.
Yeah.
So we rent the bracelets from, I don't know what the company name is, but
Okay.
That, that fee is, you're talking, it just says electronic monitoring. Yeah, that's, that's what we pay for the equipment. And that, the revenue from that is, I think roughly $100,000 a year, so it almost pays for half the employee and, and, and the equipment.
You, you know, the people on that, Mr. Chairman, they have to pay that cost upfront.
Oh, they do?
Correct.
Yeah, if you don't pay, you don't play.
Okay, I didn't realize that.
Right.
Because otherwise, then they got to come in and use the other old-school
Okay.
tracking methods or whatever.
Anything else for Steve?
All right.
Then I guess we'll move on.
Okay. Next one is 911.
Or did you have something yet, Mr. Aaron's?
Nope.
Okay.
Uh, in, the salaries and wages is in, increased due to full-time wages, benefits increased. We have, we've done a, and I give the supervisor of 911 a lot of credit for this. We, we, he's reduced overtime by 75 or 80% for the last two years. I think we're at $18,000 just this year, and our budget's 114. So he's doing a great job with that. We are noticing that the busier we get, that we, we could, could see that start to go up because there's some staffing issues with flooding and, and we currently run with two dispatchers, and there's a lot of, there's, there's going to eventually be a time where we're going to need three during peak times. However, so that, that is good news out there. Fees and contracts, up 15,000, an increase of $15,000. That's partially because of the CAD portion for dispatch, and then we would like to add the hyper-reach mass notification system. And this is just a reverse notification system, so if there's flooding or a, say, we have a hostage situation where we're trying to evacuate an area, dispatch can actually reverse notify people in geographically of situations are going on, roads that are closed, that kind of stuff. I did misstate, though, the $11,599 is not a one-time fee, it's an annual fee. So in order to go to this, it's going to cost about $1,000 a month, and it will be an ongoing expense, not a one-time expense. And that's really the only increase in dispatch. Yeah, everything else is 3% or stayed the same. Good news about dispatch is that the state just passed a law that went into effect yesterday. The, the 911 fee went from $1.25 to $2, so that should increase our revenue from the state's, the state side to, I want to say, and I think it's conserv- I have conservatively put it in here at 550,000, but I think doing the math on what we've been collecting monthly, I think it's going to be closer to about 612,000, but this is just, again, a safe number.
How much of your time, Steve, do you spend on the 911, the dispatch?
Not a lot. I don't spend a lot of time with that. It's, Todd manages it very well, manages the people well. Uh, we do, you know, we get complaints from time to time that I ta- I, I handle most of those through dispatch, and I, in the chain of command, I supervise dispatch.
Okay, any other questions for Sheriff?
All right, my final budget, 24/7. There, the only increase is... Let's see why this got so high. The increase is 12%, it's 11% overall, 90,000 to 99,000, and that's due to wages. And that's, again, going to be the union contract and health benefits. Everything else stays the same. That's just one, one employee and a little bit of our secretarial staff.
So we start people out at what, approximately what per hour now, then? With the 7% increase, depends on their experience, correct, or?
Yeah, a, a new, and I'd have to look. I think a new deputy would, a deputy is $29.
You're going to add additional deputy, correct? So we would start out at?
Probably, I think it's about $29.
29.
29, 21.
That's what I was...
If it's a CO, it's 23 or 24 probably by now.
Now, do you, do you also get a step beside that 7% then for each year?
I don't know what the deputies, I don't know what the union contract was, but it, sure.
So, um, our union contract agreement is 5% for 2025, and then the deputies also, if they have not stepped out and have a positive review, would have an increase of 2.5%. So, um, so the budget reflects both those things, assuming the 2.5% step since we budget for that, and then the 5% for the union agreement.
So it's, so it's 2.5%?
For, yeah, for their step increase, if they qualify for it. We always include it in the budget because it's better to be prepared, but we always, that is something they have to qualify for, whereas the 5% COLA is in the union agreement. And then the following year will be a, a different percentage.
So that would be on top of the 7% then?
Uh, no, sorry, the 7% is not for 2025. That was the 2024 COLA for the union, but for 2025, it will be a 5% for our deputies. Um, and then with our salary, we do, while the union agreement is only for our deputies and our sergeants, we do typically budget for that 5% to trickle down to, or trickle off, rather, to our lieutenants and our chief deputy, uh, some, to ensure that there is not wage compaction or concerns where subordinates are making more than their superiors. So that is also included in the salary as well as that for the rest of our staff, we have a 3% COLA. But for all of our, like, our sheriff's office that are, those people that are on the sheriff's matrix are at a 5% COLA for 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Paul. Want to take state's attorney, since he is here? All right, state's attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tom Wolman, Lincoln County State's Attorney. This morning, as I was preparing my notes, it just, it's always important to know where you've been when moving forward, and of course, this is now, I think, my 22nd or 23rd budget address. And when I started in 2020, or, excuse me, 2000, rather, throw out that extra two, uh, we had two attorneys and three staff positions, and as I stand before you today, we have nine attorneys and 13 staff positions. So we've increased significantly over the years, but those increases have come, you know, directly related to the case growth that we've seen and the management issues that we have as we've grown. So I've always had the, sort of the theme that I, I wouldn't ask for something unless I truly needed it, and this year's ask includes three new full-time employees. And I'll outline those needs as I work through my address here today.
So you're asking for three new people?
Correct. So as, as Sheriff Swenson had just talked about, you know, he, he's increasing his staff at a rate. He's, needs a new SRO. Uh, he needs additional 24/7 help, but previous years, he's added road deputies and an ICAC investigator. He spoke a little bit about that, the Internet Crimes Against Children investigator that he has. And, and every time he adds a road deputy or an investigator like that, that increases my caseload significantly. Uh, and those cases are, are complex investigations, and his ICAC investigator does a very nice job with those. I know that we've got at least one active case right now. We're addressing what Commissioner Aaron's was just talking about with the, an individual from, I believe he was from Minnehaha County that traveled here to Lincoln County with the belief that he was going to have sex with a 15-year-old girl. And when you get into that individual's social media accounts and into their phones, what you find is that this wasn't a one-time deal. And it is truly alarming at how dangerous some of these offenders are. And middle of the day, this guy's traveling to a truck stop here in Lincoln County with the belief that he's going to meet up with a 15-year-old girl for immoral purposes. So those cases, they're, they're great cases, they're important investigations, but on my end, they take a significant amount of work. They are...
Have, have we had the same number of felony cases?
No, they've, they've increased.
This year, as we did all the last year? Isn't, am I correct on that?
We're, we've, we've seen an increase this year, and we, as we do every year. From the year before, we had an increase that, that year as well. So, yeah, our, our numbers are up, but I think that, that our, our numbers and the cases that we're working on become more and more complex. We've got five open homicide investigations right now. Uh, one of those hasn't been fully charged out yet. Uh, one of them is an attempted homicide. Uh, but of those five homicides that we have here in the county right now, we have nine victims. Uh, two of those are triple homicides. And so, as you can imagine, then, that puts an exceptional load on my office, not only just from the case management perspective, but also from the victim witness management perspective. Because of those nine victims, we have 11 different distinct families that we are representing every time that we go to court. So we represent the people. We also represent those 11 different families on each one of those cases that we go to court on. Uh, one of my asks is for a new victim witness assistant coordinator. That victim witness person in my office works directly with those victims' families, and while I don't deal with those families on a daily basis, they oftentimes do because those victims have questions about what's going on with the case and, and what is going on with crime victims' compensation and with seven notifications, et cetera. We have a constitutional duty to make sure, or a mandate, to make sure that those victims' voices collectively are heard and that they are represented by my office. So that, that is one of my asks. Uh, our numbers are up, our felony load is up, and when you've got, again, 11 different distinct family members, or family groups, I would call them, on these various homicide cases that we have, it is incredibly taxing. We're still reaching out to and coordinating with victims' families from our triple homicide from the city of Sioux Falls a couple of weeks ago. We, you know, it takes, takes time for things to settle from funerals and, and from that grieving process before we reach out to them and coordinate with them to discuss what we're doing with those criminal, with that criminal prosecution. So that is one of my asks, is for a new victim witness assistant position. Uh, it's outlined in, in my budget. Additionally, each one of those investigations, again, with those homicide cases, and just the day-to-day work of what my office does, we've added a, a new investigator position. I think that was one of my most recent additions, aside from the diversion coordinator position. But the investigators work on follow-up investigations, they manage evidence, and in particular, they work with and manage the digital evidence that comes from each one of those investigations. Since we've added that new position, I believe it was last year, John Matthews is our, one of our investigators. In a year, he's worked on 2,336 cases and closed those cases. So when the Sioux Falls Police Department shows up to a triple homicide, there are usually, I think that he's got between 40 and 50 street units or, or officers that, that responded to that scene, and then you've got all the... that, that responded to that scene, and then you've got all the detectives, you've got the, um, all that evidence, uh, is digital evidence. Cause each one of those cars, each one of those officers has a body camera. That body camera needs to be downloaded and then downloaded by my office and then ultimately disseminated to defense counsel. And, uh, he manages a, a significant caseload as it relates to the securing of that evidence and the, uh, the downloading of that evidence and getting that out to defense counsel. Uh, just looking down through his monthly report, uh, January, a hundred and twenty-four cases, February, a hundred and forty-two cases, March, two hundred and sixty-four cases, April, one forty-three, May, one twenty-six, and June, a hundred and eighty-five cases completed. The current caseload is about a hundred and eleven cases, and he is task saturated. Uh, we're, we're looking at potentially having to pay him overtime, and he can't, he can't keep up. Uh, our other investigator works on, uh, you know, interviews and following up and procuring other pieces of evidence. And, uh, we really need this position. And again, I wouldn't be here asking unless we were truly being inundated and overrun, uh, with these, uh, video requests. And, and again, the duty that I have to preserve that evidence and get it out to defense counsel. As, as the two attorneys on the board know what Brady means and, uh, what the preservation of evidence means and getting evidence out to defense counsel, it is of utmost importance. And, uh, flaws that I have in that process or mistakes that are made can have huge impacts on the prosecutions of these cases. So, uh, when we don't reach out and procure and secure that evidence, sometimes that works a great hardship against us in our efforts to hold, uh, offenders accountable. So that, that is, uh, my, my other ask, and again, uh, related to the continued investigation and, um, securing of this digital evidence. The other thing I didn't mention is that, for example, on these two triple homicide cases, everybody's got a phone. Uh, and what we do with those phones is of, of great importance to us, uh, in our prosecutions because, uh, generally speaking, most people's lives are on their phones. And our triple homicide from December involved four youth. Uh, each one of those kids had a phone on them, uh, at the time of the commission of that offense. And each one of those phones has, you know, forty gigabytes worth of information on it. Uh, that takes a, not only a significant amount of time to get into those phones, which we partner with Homeland Security, the FBI, and, uh, Division of Criminal Investigation in getting into those phones, but then you get this raw data that comes to our investigators that, that needs to be processed and, uh, for evidentiary value, and it is of great evidentiary value. So our triple homicide from the other week, no exception, we've got multiple phones that will need to be downloaded. And again, John Matthews, Gary Harvison, our two investigators are point on securing that and making sure that that finds its way to defense counsel and into our files as well. I mentioned, uh, briefly, uh, that our case numbers are up, our, our misdemeanor numbers are up, our felony numbers are up. You know, Mr. Rasmussen's slide from the other week, you noted in, I think it was slide thirteen, in his presentation was fines and costs. And you noticed that, that very large uptick in those fines and costs. And that's directly related to the number of misdemeanor and felony files that we're working on. I could sit here today and tell you that we're on track to do between five fifty and six hundred, and we may top six hundred this year. I don't know that for sure. Um, I can just tell you that we're working a lot harder just based upon the nature of the cases alone that we're working on. So that is my, uh, additional ask would be for an attorney position. The other thing that I'd like to, to mention about the attorney position is that we, when you have that increase in caseload, we've, uh, what the circuit court has done recently is we've split. I mean, I wish I could say that's like a stock split because that would be a wonder, that'd be wonderful news. This is a split of our court calendar. And Judge Mammiga and Judge Rasmussen will now each be handling a portion of Lincoln County's criminal caseload, which is great. Uh, that, that, uh, that, that helps the judiciary and, and the courts in processing and, and working through those court dates. What's not so great is what it does to my office. Because now we have two, what are called stack weeks. And those jury trial weeks are now not on, they're not on one week, but they're on two weeks. And what does that mean for my office? Well, that means that that caseload gets divided into two weeks, uh, so all those jury trials that are supposed, that generally happen in one week are now going into two weeks. And what that means for my support staff, and in particular, my victim witness assistants and my paralegals, is that they need to reach out to anywhere from sixty to ninety witnesses, uh, for those two trial weeks to coordinate with victims and to coordinate with, uh, all enforcement witnesses and lay witnesses to get all those people to court. And I can tell you that it's a hell of choreography, and it is very difficult to manage. And now that we've split those two trial weeks, uh, or split that trial week into two weeks, it is gonna have a significant impact on how we are able to service and manage the cases that we're prosecuting. So, uh, we're at that point where I need additional bodies to have, uh, covering court files or court cases, criminal cases. And, um, obviously, I, I need additional staff to be able to manage the caseload that continues to grow.
Tom, was there a discussion between your office and the judges before they did that?
There was not, unfortunately. I, I, I don't know what I could have brought to that other than, and I did have an informal discussion with Judge Rasmussen in an effort just to see if we could kick it out a little bit. As I mentioned, or as, uh, HR mentioned here a little bit ago, I've got three staff positions that, that need to be filled, and thank you for your consideration on those, on that paralegal over hire. We have two paralegals, uh, who are departing my office for law school, which is a pretty exciting thing. Obviously, you want, uh, you want the best and, for your staff, and you want that personal development, but it's, these two vacancies couldn't have hit at much worse of a time as we're, uh, gearing up to go into these, uh, two trial week, or this two trial week calendar. And then I've got an attorney that's departing the office just to, uh, sort of slow things down. So, uh, kudos for her and, uh, but I'm trying to hire for all three positions as we move into that, and, uh, it blindsided me. Uh, so it's, it's gonna be a somewhat of a staffing nightmare. So again, I, I wouldn't be here asking if, if I didn't feel that I truly needed it. Uh, we didn't, uh, we added a juvenile diversion coordinator last year and the investigator last year. The juvenile diversion coordinator is a, a grant-funded position, and she's been doing great work, uh, with our schools and lowering our juvenile docket by diverting kids out of the juvenile justice system to have them, you know, accomplish goals in lieu of bringing them into the, the court system. So that's helped significantly. And at the end of this year, I, I will be excited to bring to you, you know, what, what we've essentially earned from the state by diverting those kids out. So, uh, you know, other efficiencies, we continue to work with IT, uh, to look for and continue to utilize the best case management software that's out there and the best software that we have to, uh, disseminate that digital evidence to defense counsel. Although sometimes it's tricky for them, uh, it, it has been a real time and cost savings to be able to use that software. So, any questions about what I've covered thus far?
Well, I think public safety is expensive business, and it's gotta be done. And we're in a growing county. And, you know, I'm just totaling up here. Uh, basically, between the sheriff's office and the state's attorney's office and the jail, uh, we're looking at one point two million more new dollars on top of what we already spent. And I think there's just a cost to growth, isn't there?
Absolutely, you know, and, and as I talked about with the, the technology aspects of it, I mean, if, if, if I would have been prosecuting that, that homicide or any of these homicides from back in two thousand, when I started, we would not have had that digital evidence that's out there. I don't even know if we would have had CDRs or crash dent, uh, crash data recorders in the vehicles, for example, or, uh, certainly would not have had ring doorbell cameras that, that need to be procured and, and secured and, and reviewed. Certainly wouldn't have had the cell phones. So, things have become much more complicated than they were even ten years ago.
Did you look at, is it just because of, like, a personality issue why you wanna do two part-time investigators instead of converting the one part-timer to a full-timer?
And actually, it would be keeping the, the full-time, uh, keeping the part-timer and adding a full-timer. Uh, and, and I don't, I need to make that correction to my budget. I apologize for, for not updating, but I, I do need that to be a full-time position, and I, I need to get that paperwork to you for a correction. My apologies.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be another...
I thought I caught that in there.
Yeah, it would be a full-time investigator position. I think, you know, comparatively up north, I think Minnehaw County may have as many as six, and they, they are task saturated as well, so...
Tom, how long you been doing this?
Twenty, twenty-four years. I was on the agenda today for my longevity recognition, so thank you for that. But too, too long's at a bad answer.
You've seen some changes.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And, and, and what a, what a fun, uh, and exciting thing it's been to be part of the growth of Lincoln County and, um, uh, to be here versus where I would have been, I, I think my first budget would have been twenty-three, or two thousand and three, so... And again, probably asking for a budget for six people and some paper for copies, and, and that's about it, so...
So we will be getting another judge in our circuit, or have we done that already?
We do, yeah, we do, with Judge Mammiga's down here full-time, um, and Judge, uh, Rasmussen, of course, remains here full-time as well. There, you know, there's talk that they may, may, may even have enough work down here for halftime or full-time, depending on what we have available just in terms of court space, so... Incredible, incredible growth that we've, we've seen here, and, um, excited as we continue to do, do our best to service that growth and, and as we look to the new public safety center and getting that facility up and running, um, I, I think that, that they will fill it.
Any other questions for State's Attorney? Comments?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I guess Harold, you are here.
Good morning again, and, uh, my budget's extremely less complicated than the prior two, so this, my, um, salary increase is at the discretion of the commission. The one thing we're gonna face this year from emergency management is a ten percent cut in the funding from state and FEMA. That's, uh, we had to do this with our Homeland Security grant after we had it finalized, so...
So that's, um, coming from the feds that they're giving us ten percent less?
Yes, yes. So that trickles down to the state and then down to here, so instead of covering, uh, my salaries, OSI, retirement, workers' comp, and group health at a fifty percent level, it'll be at a forty percent level. So we tried to make that, that adjustment. Other than that, everything else is going to stay the same in the items below there. We, uh, I did turn in the, uh, new vehicle request form. As was mentioned earlier, my vehicle's ten years old, and, uh, we have had little if any trouble with it. We've, the biggest expense we've had is tires and gas and change in oil. It's still running good, it may go on longer. If the commission approves a new vehicle, we'll pursue that. Then, like we mentioned, uh, when, uh, the sheriff was up here, they may wanna keep my vehicle as the vehicle to pull the incident command post. I pulled it around quite a bit and, and am willing to do that whenever it's needed, except if I'm gone or not, not available, they need a vehicle to do that, so... I think Jared from the highway department has done it once, and then I went and got it when they were finished with it, so... That too, is at the discretion of the commission. So I brought it to your attention for your consideration, and we'll do whatever the commission decides to have, have done, so... Like I said, my, that vehicle's got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand on it as we speak. So, and then, uh, when I, I did talk to, um, millions up in Sioux Falls at the Dodge level, we've, I've had a Dodge, we've had good luck with them. It's, uh, the suspension seems to be a little heavier than some vehicles for pulling trailers, my generator and so forth. And, um, so I worked with the fleet manager up there and, and he suggested maybe we may even wanna order the vehicle towards the end of this year and get it in twenty-five, get a twenty-four instead of getting a twenty-five because there's gonna be a price increase again. So just something to consider. That too, is at your total discretion, so... Any other questions you might have for me and my budget?
Harold, um, thanks for putting this together. Thanks for all the work you've been doing here recently and have done in the past. Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of replacing your vehicle, it's ten years old. You've probably taken pretty good care of it, cause I read on your sheet, it said you haven't had to do anything other than just general maintenance.
Right.
Um, I think this issue, I, what I would like better, though, is to turn the old vehicle in for resale in order to offset the cost of buying the new one. Cause, I mean, I, I think we, this, you know, if the vehicle is not good enough to drive anymore, then it shouldn't be just hanging around out in the, in the lot waiting for an emergency to happen to pull another trailer. I, I assume your pickup could do that, the new pickup could do that just fine, right? And I would think that, you know, that helps offset the cost and...
That was mainly mentioned in passing when I took it to T the last time. So it's just, uh, nothing that's been, um, put in, in stone or suggested formally, but just a thought.
You bet.
Any other questions? Comment? Okay, thank you.
Kidokey. Thank you, everyone.
Paul, what do we got left?
Uh, Jake.
Jake, alright. Technology. Nothing ever changes there, right Jake?
Never, ever.
Every, every day, every other day.
Uh, Jake Oakland, Lincoln County IT Director.
New pay going with everyone, are they getting, uh, their pace, I mean, their, uh, new?
Uh, it's, it's going, it's going.
It's going good.
Little change, but it's getting there. A little time, it'll be good to go.
Yeah.
Sometimes change is hard. Yeah, yeah. Uh, but yeah, Jake Oakland, Lincoln County IT Director. I, my main increase to my budget is due to an employee in my office accepting our health insurance. Otherwise, I have about a three to four percent increase on my other line items. Uh, do you have any questions to start off with? Or concerns?
No.
How, how much do you spend to try to prevent viruses and all that good stuff? What, what does that line item?
I would go with my grand total of my budget, no. Um, it is getting more expensive, cause the software for, to, for the prevention and everything of that is getting more expensive. That is, most of my increase is due to the fact that licensing is getting more expensive, and then the other part is the growth of the county's, um, employee rate. Has increased that as well. Uh, one of the things that we're trying to do is prolong devices as much as we can, uh, just to try to offset some costs there. Otherwise, we're doing as much as we can with this, with the resources that we have.
Jake, I notice here under the computer software line item, you're bumping up from three twenty to four sixty-three for next year. You know, basically a hundred and forty-three K more in spending. What, what goes into that?
Uh, part of it is due to licensing increases. Another part is the ADP is coming out of there now. And, cause, uh, I put it under professional services until we actually sign on to it. And then the other part is that we have, we're running a storage, running into storage problems of digital evidence, and we've had to increase that, and we have moved forward with a cloud-based system. And with that cloud-based system, I pay it out of the software line item.
Okay, was, has there been any thought about shifting that, uh, breaking that cost out, shifting that over to State's Attorney's Office?
Uh, it would be if we did do that, it would be State's Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, ICAC, it would be multiple departments. Um, and a little smidge of the administration side does use the cloud storage as well. So it's, it's easier to just pu- put it all under one department as a better accounting on that part.
And then under furniture and minor equipment, go, you're at two hundred and ten, I mean, I'm gonna, is that just new computers or servers or?
Uh, there'll be new computers, and then we have budgeted... There'll be new computers, and then we have budgeted for a new storage unit that is on-premise here for the local devices that we have for storing servers, surveillance systems, and things like that.
Do the, I assume if there's any new hardware, other than centralized hardware like servers and storage units, what's the thinking behind not breaking them out to the department that actually is going to use it?
The cost accounting on it would be difficult. It would actually cost, it would, you would be paying me a lot of hours to figure out how much it would cost per department to use each one. And when we do centralize them as one, it does significantly cut down on the cost of the devices.
You know, yeah, I get that part about buying them in a centralized manner, but once you get them. I'm sure the invoice says, you know, you bought a computer $2,500, and it's going to the auditor's office. Why don't we account for that in the office where it's going to as opposed to putting it in your budget?
Oh, like computers and desktops and things like that?
Yeah, you buy a desktop, and it gets distributed out to somebody's office.
Can I speak on that, Jake?
Yes, sure.
So a couple of years ago, we changed the way we did the accounting for that, because Jake manages the inventory, so I don't necessarily know when my computers are coming up to be renewed. So with him managing them, he just takes them in and out of inventory rather than me having to think, oh, do I need a budget for computers? It's just all based on him then. So I'm not putting $5,000 in my budget thinking, oh, I'm getting computers this year. It's all just centralized with him, and he rolls it through the inventory. The inventory also is tracked through the IT department for all technology.
It was almost a way of, I've been here for a while now, but it was almost a way of making people honest. We had departments, when I first started, it was spread out, and we had departments that were replacing computers that were a year old, and we had people replacing them when they're 10 years old. It was more to keep a, keep an honest and keep a schedule of replacing all equipment.
And non-budget fluff?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I guess staffing here, okay, with what you have, correct?
Yes, with the new building, we think we'll be fine there, because it's not as if we're getting new departments or new staff or anything there, it's just transferring people over, so we, we're doing pretty good right now for staff.
I guess when the time comes, probably we'll need his input into some of those things as well with the new building, so.
Yeah, anything I can do.
Any other questions for Jake? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all for now, Paul, as far as budget?
Yeah, I just want to have one clarification just-
Okay.
We, during the sheriff's portion, you guys had discussed what to do with the salaries for the sheriff and the chief deputies, splitting them between jail or just localizing them. Do we want to make a decision now? Is that something we want to take back and discuss? Just looking for some final clarification.
Well, I think what I discovered today is that we don't have a consistent procedure for this budget accounting. We have the sheriff's department, and we split it up, but then we got Jake's department, and we don't split it up, and then we got the, it just seems to be kind of all over the place, and it's just based on ease of use as opposed to transparency. I see the arguments on both sides, but I think what needs to happen is-
Whichever way we land, this is just my opinion, there should be a consistent methodology behind it as opposed to, well, this is what's easier. It's not about what's easier, it's about, if accuracy is where the consensus is, then we should adopt the accuracy model across the board and be splitting these expenses out in these departments everywhere. And I'm not, I'm not opposed to it. Like I said, you know, I kind of, I'm just kind of, I take the common taxpayer view, but I can be sold on either methodology. I just think there should be a consistent application of the methodology across the budget, so that's my view.
So with that, the personnel is different than the computers. We are doing the accuracy on the computers or other whatever expenditure is like that because there was fluff being put into budgets for things that they did not control. Same way with the utilities. The utilities, we used to split it out amongst every department. Well, I was saying, oh, it's going to cost me $1,000 a year for utilities, but it would cost 200. So we put the utilities under the general building that's responsible for it. Now, with personnel, it's a little different, because you are being responsible for the difference. So I think both avenues are being used, accuracy and efficiency for, you know, because otherwise there is money being put in the budget in separate, you know, general fund was having electricity here, and then auditor's office is director of equalization, and it's all under one. Does that make sense, the way we were thinking of it?
No, okay.
I think I understand what you're saying, and I think it's been rationalized. I think probably the commission, though, has not, you know, when it comes to this fluff issue, I probably agree with you, but that's, the commission didn't do a good enough job holding the department heads' feet to the fire on that. That's our fault, collective fault for not doing that. And, you know, I wouldn't change the budgeting methodology, because we're failing to hold department heads to account when it comes to computer sales and all that. The utilities, I completely agree with you on, that needs to be consolidated and centralized. I don't think any of the departments are paying individual separate utility bills, are they? You know, you don't pay an electric bill, and the assessor's office doesn't pay one, do they?
We are not doing it anymore. We used to, we used to divide it out. Now, the only thing we divide out is the phone, because the phone bill is attached to your phone number, so you see it. What they used to do is they used to take electricity, and they'd say, oh, you have five employees? You're paying $500.
Right.
And so it wasn't, in my mind, the right way to do it.
Completely agree with you there. You know, we're paying one electric bill, it's buildings and grounds, I get it. I just, you know, that's my viewpoint.
And these are all things, too, we can take a note of, and as we complete this process and go through this process, we can debrief, like, as we go through or keep notes, and whenever we want to, we can always retool and bring these things up and keep formalizing and making things, putting things in writing with policies can always be helpful for making sure we have that consistency. So as you, as we continue going, you know, we can always keep debriefing and keep fine-tuning this process so it looks exactly the way you want it. And then with that, next week, we have equalization treasurer, and then we will also have the outside agencies who have requested funding increases.
Getting back to your original question, though, I know Commissioner Schmidt isn't here. Maybe he'd have some input on whether or not to keep these requests for new hires. I don't know. I don't know Commissioner Poppins, his viewpoint, so maybe we should wait. That would be my suggestion, but maybe my colleagues feel differently.
I don't think they were talking about the request for the new hires, they were just talking about the division of the sheriff's wage. There has been no motion about whether the new hires stay in the budget or not.
And, yeah, I mean, and from my point of view, as far as splitting the wage, I mean, if a department head, especially a constitutional department head wants to keep different line items so he can better, he or she can better track what's going on in the office, I'm not going to mess with that as far as, I mean, the numbers are the same, so it all comes out of the same pot. It's just a way of tracking, so I'm not, I'm not in favor of telling them how to-
Okay.
-split out their budget line items.
All right. That give you enough direction?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know, Tracy, you wanted us to go into executive session, correct, for staffing?
I'm going to defer to legal on that one.
So, yeah, we need to go into executive session, my understanding, yes. Under one and two?
Three.
One and three?
Yeah.
Okay. We don't have to read those, do we?
No.
Okay.
So moved to go into executive session under those sub-sections?
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion by Aaron's and a second by Landine to go into executive session. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. We will not-
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Aaron's, second by Landine. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes. Motion carried.
Did we do our opportunity for public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
We did. So with that being said, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Landine, second by Aaron's. Any discussion? Not, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Landine?
Yes.
Gibbon?
Yes.